Council discussion regarding the future of the Riverfront facility as the permanent and formal council chambers and direction to staff is warranted.
Thank you, Mayor. There was a council.
Mr. Sepultis.
I've got a few slides here tonight, primarily just to spur the discussion, and then we'll turn it over to council. Because there's been much discussion and items prior to my arrival, I have my A-team here. Mr. Marks shared today that he's a big football fan, so I'll be the quarterback. These are the guys that actually get things done, so I'll be more like Vanna today, just turning slide and slide and kind of pose some questions for you folks. I guess helps to turn this on. So why are we here? As we look, one, I needed to come up with a work session item because we had to punt on the strategic plan because Ryan's on vacation. But more importantly, we've worked and have been working with staff in the clerk's office to put together a list of future agenda items, things that we have outstanding and trying to lay things out. We have, you know, close to $10 million that's appropriated in this next year's capital improvement project for city buildings, city improvements. Kirsten, I requested the CIP budget from her, and she provided it. And the item related to the Riverfront item was possible design and improvements for council chambers at the Riverfront. I did watch the budget meetings and saw the council discussion back and forth. August 5th was the first meeting I had a chance to watch live, and I saw where Council Member Dowell brought up the discussion of the chambers here, and so I thought it was an appropriate item. Several of you had discussed the council chambers in one permutation or another with me during our one-on-one meetings, so I thought that was the time. Got together with staff, tried to get some history. Historically, the council meetings were held in the council chambers on Main Street. On November 14th of 2023, council meetings were moved here to the Riverfront facility. I asked the clerk's office to provide me for all of the history and decisions and direction that was given with regards to the council chambers here at the Riverfront facility. Both her and then Tom was able to share that said, "Actually, there was a little formal direction regarding the council chambers here," and so then that brings us to this matter. The previous discussion and talking with Scott and David, the previous discussion with regards to council chambers here at the Riverfront centered on what you see on the screen here, potential retail, future office. This kind of gives a layout that showed roughly over 2,000 square feet. I am aware that there was discussion about a council chambers. It was a different design at what we refer to as the rough cut building. And as part of that whole process, in $2,023, there was a discussion about council chambers permanently here being about $650,000. But that was just kind of the construction portion. When you look on what would be the left of your screen there, it's just over $1 million for that estimate. Because we have $650,000, I wanted to come to this body, get your input on, you know, what you folks would like to see. I think this is that opportunity. Very rarely, because of the open meeting laws, does council have the opportunity to all sit in a room, specifically with staff, that are kind of the subject matter experts on this, and talk about what each of you would like to see in the permanent council chambers. And more specifically, depending on where and the timing, what may be some of the issues that haven't been discussed formally yet that these folks are prepared to share with you regarding, you know, planning, zoning, permitting, uses, occupancy, and costs and what that might be. And so those things are all things that we're prepared to discuss with council this evening. We talk a lot about needs. We do needs assessments. We, you know, what are the needs? And these are ones that I've pulled off. I did some research. One of the things that's important that you see in modern chambers is space to allow for better communication with staff or between staff and citizens and the council body. I think this is a layout that lends itself very well to that. Obviously, in a permanent chambers, you're going to have council from an elevated position, but still there's the opportunity to also elevate staff at some way or another, either on the side. Based on some of the draft considerations you've seen, one of the things that we'll need to take into consideration is the technology. We have the ability for the audience to see the screens here, but they're not ideal. You folks are looking down at one. Typically, what you'll see in modern chambers is maybe one side of the room will have a large screen. That's you could have the electronic voting that's posted up there. You can have the agenda as a whole, and then as each item, if items are pulled off a consent calendar, where it's a new business or a old business item, you can have that singled out for the public to follow. But more importantly, in a design, when you do it right, you're also going to have cameras that have those angles. And you'll have the ability for the technology to overlay that specific agenda item. If there's a presentation going on at the screen, for those that are watching remotely, they'll have that same presentation and be able to follow along with it. You'll have where cameras will focus on council, but you'll also have cameras that can focus on the speaker and have all of that integrated. And those are things that we'll need to take into consideration. As I just heard, kind of some acoustic issues, those all can be dealt with also, but those are things that are important that go into design is making sure that the acoustics are there. Should we have a meeting where rates and fees are going to turn up and the public's not happy with it, the public can get more and more boisterous. I think when folks, when you're down at the league, you saw several meetings on incivility in government or the lack of civility. The public is getting more and more raucous. As we've come out of COVID, it has started to get worse and worse. And I think my personal opinion is, for roughly two years, people got very comfortable being at home, being keyboard warriors, and then they came out and forgot that it's not appropriate to act that way in public. And that's continuing. You see it a lot at school board meetings. You'll see it, you know, we're a smaller community, so that's not a big issue here. But there will come items that are going to come before this body where you're going to have the public turn out. And that goes into some of the other things, the proper sight lines and angle, so that the public doesn't get frustrated with not being able to see it or not being able to see the council members. That's important to read. You know, we talk about communication, body language, listening, all of that is important to making that public behind us feel heard. And so those are some things that all need to be taken into account. Security features, you know, needing council to feel safe, needing staff to feel safe, and the public as well. That may be involved live security, police. Typically, that's what you'll see. You're paying police officers anyway. Usually, you'll see at least one or two sworn officers that come to the meetings and serve as the sergeant of arms, but you'll need a place for that. You need, you just don't want them in the back of the room somewhere. You need somewhere where they can watch what's going on and maintain that security. The egress and safety, if something happens, how folks get out, how they come in, making sure that there's adequate there, and then parking as well. Those are issues that need to be taken in consideration, both on the handicap side and then just general parking, making sure that there's enough for those one or two off meetings. But as I say that, it's also very common nowadays to have council chambers that are designed for typical use in a community. And then you have an alternate location where if you're expecting much larger crowds based on a topic, based on a feedback, you have a separate facility. We could do that at the rec center. I don't know if you folks have done that, but there are areas where you can look to hold those meetings that would accommodate larger gatherings than you would in your typical chambers. You don't want to spend the cost to do a 5,000-square-foot chamber, and on average, you have 10 individuals that show up to a meeting. That's just not a good spending of public funds. And that's pretty much the presentation I have. As I said, for us, it's more just about laying the framework for this discussion. And Mayor, I'll turn it back to you and allow you to kind of start the conversation between council. And then any questions that you may have, we'd be more than happy to answer them about any of the elements, any of the locations, that sort of thing.
Okay. Yeah, I, because we do have a new building and we're not limited to this location absolutely, I want to consider the possibility, that was my caveat in agreeing to the purchase of the Spectrum Building on Mangos, that we, you know, consider the possibility of having a council chamber there because it would consolidate city services even more than having a separate council chamber over here in the park and next to a wastewater treatment facility. So I want that to be part of the discussion, too. The questions that I'm still trying to get in mind more specifically have to do which offices would be located in the new building and where they would be and, you know, how is service provided? Are there, you know, does everybody need a window for people to come up to? And, you know, how would that work? How are we visualizing that? And then, two, I think, when we begin talking about renovating either facility, how and who is going to do that? So those are my two questions.
I think those are good questions. I was thinking about tonight's meeting and thinking about what might be a good approach. I thought it would be helpful if we could kind of just say what features would be desirable for council chambers, and that could then help us in making the right decision in terms of location. And I'm not even sure, Mayor, whether we need to limit ourselves to this facility or the Spectrum Building, you know? I mean, I think we should just be open to opportunities and options.
Yeah, I agree with Vice Mayor Coates. I think we should look at, you know, all options, at least address them and eliminate options that don't fit our needs. That would include co-locating perhaps with the county. They have chambers at the county building or the school board, and they have, you know, they have their school board meetings and, you know, we should just, you know, take a look at the pros and cons of that and just take a look at those options. From my standpoint, you know, the main driver for me in selecting the Spectrum Building and the city did, congratulations to the city. I think you did a great job as a city identifying the location and making a very fair deal on the purchase. But, you know, my main driver was, you know, giving our great city staff the space they deserve to, you know, so that they're, you know, having a more productive and enjoyable work experience where they're getting out of storage rooms and getting out of closets and, you know, corners and, you know, doubling up in single-person offices. That was my driver. And I'm not just talking about near term. You know, I expect that we will have this municipal center for many, many years. And so, you know, if we just, to throw out a number, we'll get 20 years from now. If you go back 20 years and look at the size of the city staff and look at that number now, I don't know what the percentage increase is, but I'm pretty sure it's pretty substantial. And I want to have that space to grow in this building so that, you know, 10 years from now, we're not looking for, you know, an additional building because we've got overflow. So, you know, that would be part of my desires, that we're looking at, you know, what the current configuration in terms of workspace is and, you know, what our projected needs are here's down the road. I know there has been some discussion about the chambers being, you know, in the, we'll call it the Spectrum Building. If it can be worked out and we're not, you know, potentially compromising workspace for our employees, then, you know, it's certainly something to look at. I'd be concerned about it being anywhere other than on the first floor. If it's, if there's a consideration on putting it on the second floor, I would expect that, you know, our emergency services departments would bless that plan from a safety and security standpoint. So, you know, for me, that's where I'm at.
This is where I came up with. I didn't even assume using Spectrum because of the size. And I don't think, and that's probably a better question for you all, but upstairs in my mind is out of the question and the space for potential growth. But I wrote up a list of why we should use this building, and I didn't even think about others, which is certainly an option. But the obvious is the office size and the volume and the labor and time to move from this building to the other, although we need IT equipment and other things to improve this building for sure. And FFNE's furniture fixtures and equipment at the new location, whether it be this one or the other, what does that mean, if there is any, and there is? Hidden and associated costs would be building out the new space. Do we have to hire architects? And that's a question that I think the mayor asked. Do you have to hire architects, engineers, project managers, general contractors to build out a new space, wherever that is? This all gets down to being, I think, less expensive here. Everybody knows where it is. We've got ample parking. There's ingress, egress, but the improvements we need are the obvious. The dais, video equipment improvements, microphone improvements, voting would be, has been up high on my priority list for a while. Signage, do we need signage if we move someplace else? I don't know. Are there restrictions as far as do we need any kind of permits or anything like that? And that's, the city would do it, but what would be involved there with legal fees, that sort of thing? I don't know. Waste disposal wherever we move. And I think it would take longer to move space rather than update our current location. So there's a factor in downtime. Not that it's a major rush, but I think we need to consider it. We even have an excited office for executive meetings, and this space is already known to all. So those are my general bullet points. I just don't see a need to move from here.
So if I could add on to what Debbie has done, you know, I also thought about what's important, although I wasn't location-specific. Security being one. Good public and ADA accessibility, I think, is important. And many of you remember when Elaine Bremner came to these meetings, it was a bit of a struggle for her to get here. It's a bit of a walk. Not ideal. And even for some, just some elderly people, it's a bit of a walk. Sufficient parking, I think, is, this facility is good for that. I like it that there's parking for us as well as the public on either side. So that's a plus, I think, for this building. You know, ideally, I think, you know, it would be ideal for council chambers to be located within or adjacent to a city staff building. That's the ideal, but we may not be able to achieve that. Public seating such that all can see the council, I think everybody would agree with that, that's a problem. I just was talking to the mayor of Clarkdale, and she expressed that she couldn't see us very well. The podium placed also so that it doesn't block the view of council and council's view of the public. I can't see people. As Mayor Mario Sepultas was saying, you know, having the presentation materials such that they can be easily viewed by everyone, I think is important. I think it's important to raise the council days enough so that the audience can see the council, but I don't want it to be so much that the council appears to be setting themselves above their constituents. I don't like that feeling. I've seen that in other municipalities, and it feels like they're like hovering over the public. I don't like that.
Yeah, but if we raise it so that they can see the shortest person, that might, you know, way up there.
I resemble every market.
Yeah. Flexibility for future needed changes so that, you know, things are not bolted to the floor, that if we want to, if we need to move things. And also along the lines, I think maybe Mario may have hinted at this, is, you know, this space isn't used that often by council chambers or even beyond that. And so it's a lot of money to be used, you know, not that many times in a year. And could it be used for other purposes, for other types of meetings? I saw when I did a little research online that the city of Tolleson has done that in their civic center. So it is possible, maybe just something for us to consider. Something else I also found in my research is, you know, make sure you get your conduits for wiring in place before the concrete is poured, you know, and think about all the possible configurations so that we don't have, you know, all this stuff, all the wiring running all over the place. That's a bit of a trip hazard. And probably it's number one that I should have mentioned first is council seating so that it's easier to have a group discussion, not the straight line where I'm, you know, having to do this all the time. And so that's really important. And I sent to Mario something from the ICMA website, which is more of a circle and where staff is part of the circle and the podium is where Mario is standing. And so the public is actually part of the circle. That seemed to be That seemed to be a nice configuration. I like the public seating capacity that we have here. I think that's, that feels about right, you know, big but not too big. I'd like to get input from Yabapi Broadcasting on the room setup for ideal videography. That's their area of expertise, but that would be a consideration. Room design that's ideal for acoustics. This room seems to work pretty well, but again, if we're moving to council chambers recited in the Spectrum Building, what are the acoustics of that facility? We would need, you know, a separate room, such as we have now, for executive session. Also, for persons who are connecting and remotely, you know, that there's, that we have things set up so that it's optimal for them to participate. I also, this is more of a nice to have, but have an environment which feels open, inviting, and possibly showcases the best of our city, like artwork and things like that, just to make it feel a little bit more, you know, like a community room and more inviting to people. And my last comment is, you know, we're talking about potentially a very big project here, and as Councilmember Marks said, you know, we want to build something that's going to be lasting. And that project could take a while to, you know, design and execute. But in the meantime, what are we going to do? You know, I think that there needs to be consideration also given to, what are we going to do in the interim? You know, I think there are some simple fixes that we could do now and, you know, just to even just get us out of this line arrangement here. That would be very helpful. And if there's anything we can do to kind of do something with the podium, that would be great. That's it.
Do you want to go back and address each one of those points one at a time, or shall we, do you want people to just address all of it at once? That was a lot. Yeah, one of the, I, I want to mention too, you know, just to circle back to it, I'm also concerned about the future. I, I am concerned about, in part, I suppose, the optics of having a council chamber at a water, wastewater treatment facility. That, that kind of doesn't sit well. And I have enjoyed going to other council meetings in other towns and cities and, and seeing their council chambers, and they are absolutely designed for that purpose. They, they aren't, I didn't notice that any of them, the one that we attended, we met Governor Hobbs in Prescott, their council chambers are not enormous. And certainly even this chamber is not going to, you know, we're not going to be able to hold everyone in the public who potentially might want to be here for an event or an occasion. However, there, there is the, the future itself. And what I think about sometimes is, if, if we pour money into, into this particular location, is this what people will want to the future? Is this what, you know, future staff and, and council members will, will say, yeah, this is really great, I'm really glad we did this? Or is there a, a different route to go? The possibility of repurposing this? And one of the reasons that I say that and kind of circle back to it is because I don't feel like this building is, is easily secureable. You know, and I'm not really thinking necessarily, I'm not trying to, to send out, you know, thoughts of paranoia, but I am concerned about what could happen if someone decided that, hey, they want to come up, you know, behind the building here, and there's not much protection because it's, it's all glass. The other thing that I've talked to a few people about is the possibility, if we were to move the council chambers from this location, this location could then become the river center that, I know that friends of the Verde River is interested in developing a river center. They're, they're going to be looking for funding to support that and potentially even to build that. And I kind of said, well, you know, this building is here now, and it's in front of a non-functioning wastewater treatment plant, but this has not been decommissioned. If we start using this in the future, let's say 12 years from now, and, and this is still our, our council chamber, is, is that what we want? I mean, it's just a question, is, is this the, is, is this the right location? Is this the right image that we want for the city of Cottonwood?
I understand that this building is part of and belongs to the Enterprise Fund. That's correct. Correct. And
This property, that property.
The property next door also. Right. And so, for us to think about using this as a council chamber, how will, what would we have to do? Would we have to take it out of an enterprise fund? No?
Well, just lease it.
Just lease it.
Okay. And right now, the enterprise fund has a $1 million outstanding loan for the general fund. So basically, any lease payments would just go against that $1 million.
All right. All right. You know, I'm, I'm for a permanent city council chamber, and I don't feel like this was conducive to a permanent city council chamber. I'm very optimistic that someday this will be used as a wastewater treatment plant again. I was here for the ribbon cutting of this facility back in, what, 15 was it? And this room, as I remember, they were talking about it being a community room as such. And I remember attending a couple of meetings in here when it was set up with tables and it was some kind of training. So I, I know that the city or different organizations used it from time to time. But again, my, I'm very optimistic that this plant has a future with Mr. Whitmer, you know. And so I, I would be opposed to using this as a, a permanent city council chambers. I would be opposed to that. And I would, you know, if we could find a corner downtown, you know, in the floor plan here in Spectrum, you know, all the little offices along here, there's this corner back in here, maybe that could become, you know, a council chamber so we could, we could deal with the ADA accessible. But that's my thought. You know, the idea is that you talk about the things that we need, you know, I agree with that. It's just, my opinion is this is not where I would want to see a permanent.
Mr. SuFuentes, can you go back to the floor plan for the riverfront? So right now, we're using about 2,000 square feet. What, do we know the square footage for each floor at the Spectrum Building?
Well, the building is roughly 20,000 square feet, just under 20,000 square feet total. It's, it's equal square footage upstairs and downstairs.
So 10,000.
So 10,000 square feet upstairs, 10,000.
So theoretically, you know, council and a conference room would be taking up 20% of a floor. I mean, to me, that's a, that's a lot of space. That, that kind of inhibits growth. I mean, that's my opinion. But I, you know, I, at the same time, I agree with Councilmember Mosley. But again, there are options out there, and we should just take a look and just not limit ourselves to these two buildings for council chambers. And I do want the council chambers to, you know, reflect the city and what, you know, obviously there, there are fundamental things we have to get right, like the acoustics and the AV and the, and the dais and, you know, the seating. But we, you know, I just want to make sure that, that, you know, we're focusing what we're spending on what we really need. Because, you know, this is going to be, I don't know any, I don't know a better way of putting it, but then, you know, sunk money. We're not going to get money back on this. So that, you know, that's my concern. We should focus on what we need to have a presentable and working and secure council chambers.
Well, I'm sure some of you were here and remember what it was like to have our chambers in a very public place, when those nasty things came up and we had to stand out there and we had to have staff go in and out. So I am opposed to it being co-located with staff, because I don't want staff to have to go through that and be living through, not that they can't go protest, but if they're going to protest, they're typically going to protest us, and that's, that's why it was moved down here, was to kind of get it out of that light. I don't see a reason for us to be co-located with staff. We, our interaction with staff is here. I don't see a reason for us to interact with staff and be there because we're there when they're not there. So it really, what difference was that to me? That doesn't, that doesn't make it for me. I agree with Councilmember Marks. I want to focus spending on what we need. 600,000 bucks ain't going very far, folks. And I think this, we could probably be close with that. Alternative solutions, I don't, I wouldn't be opposed to sharing, but I also think if we start to share, then that becomes a staff nightmare, especially with scheduling and all the other committees and stuff that we have that meet in this location. You know, airport and planning zoning and just everything. So then you end up with, I, I know we only live in this once a week, but staff lives in this and a lot more. And I know staff has meetings here. I've been through quite a bit of meetings through here, so. I think we have to be very careful about security because folks have to want to come in here. We have to be open to them. I do believe that there needs to be some security precautions in place, but I also believe that if I got to go through a metal detector to get in here, that's not very welcome to me. And I think citizens need to feel welcome coming in here. We shouldn't be, in my opinion, treating them all like, well, let me make sure you're not in here to kill me. Right? Maybe it's just my background, but I, I don't feel that would be inviting. Now, with that said, and if I remember correctly, the other council chambers had protection behind the dais, right? Like right here? Was there protection at least so you could duck down?
It was wood, wasn't it?
No, but wasn't there, I thought, like, up in the middle?
It's just plywood and tile.
So I, I guess my thing for security would be, just give me a place, you know, that we can take cover, because you and I both know that it's not going to last very long. This isn't going to be a, a major thing. We can probably secure some back security and fix those things with the windows, and they make stuff to secure the windows now with bulletproof whatever that is pretty much just, you know, shading. I guess really before I answer the question of, should we use this building, I have to have the answer on, is this viable? Right? And I, I guess that's really my first thing, because if it's not viable, if this is viable, well then I wouldn't even consider this. I would be like, okay, let's go do something else. But if it's not viable, well, yeah, then let's do that. So I guess that, to me, that's getting the chicken in front of the egg or the egg in front of the chicken, because now I'm like, I don't know, you know, because then we may know, have no other choice but to put it somewhere else. So those are just my thoughts, and I, I don't want to dig through everybody else's because everybody else brought very valid points up, but my thing is, again, security. I think we have plenty of parking. We've had a lot of people in here for some very, very focused conversations, and I think this meets that. Because I, since we've been here, I don't remember us going back up to the rec center. Do you? And we used to go to the rec center quite a bit. We used to go back and forth. And like, and the chaos that caused even with staff, because I remember being staff going, okay, I'm going to council, and I'm like, oh, no. And having to run back up to the rec center because I was in the wrong place. So that just, and if I'm doing it as staff, we know citizens are doing it. So when we have to fluctuate for that, we know citizens are doing it. So I just think we really need to keep an open mind to being transparent and open to the citizens. With some of that safety thing, I get it. There are some bad people out there nowadays, but at the same time, I don't want citizens not to think that we're not
I don't either, but the only, the only reason that I suggest this is that, you know, I really think that behind the dais, there should be an ante-chamber so that there's someplace to go that, that is more secure than, than a windowed back door. I, I don't think that's, that's good security, and I don't think that future councils are going to thank us. So I don't know about
Well, I'm
Bulletproof glass and stuff like that beats me, but it sounds expensive.
I, well, that's why I didn't suggest bulletproof glass. I suggested that the film, because they have film that, that will stop it. But the primary thing on an active assailant, it's an acronym, it's run, or it's, it's run, hide, fight. Right? I, I'm not going into a room if there's, I'm going out the back door and I'm going in my car and I'll see you guys next week. Right? Like, I'm not going to go hide in a room so that I can be barricaded so that somebody can do that. Now, should we have that possibility? Yeah. But I just want a place I can get out. Like, let me get out. And this, I feel like I can get out of. Like, I can go do my thing over here. So I think we should have this open, and I think we should be able to escape as we see fit, because that's how, what we do. We run, we hide, and then we fight.
And the ante-chamber doesn't have to be a barricaded room. It should have an exit. That's, that's part of the point. So that's what I was envisioning. And I think other, you know, other council chambers that I've seen recently have, you know, they have doorways. They, you know, there's a door over here and a door over here, and, you know, they, the council doesn't have to come in from the outside. They're, they're already in the building as they come into the council chamber. And that's all I was picturing. I wasn't picturing metal detectors and, and making people feel unwelcome. I just thought, you know, there ought to be a layer of security that this building doesn't offer.
Okay. Can I talk now? All right. This is going to be kind of long, but I'm going to try not to make it that way. So follow along with me here. When this facility was, in my opinion, jammed down the residents and citizens of this town, we paid $15 million for this place. A lot of people and a lot of residents have asked, what are we going to do with this? Now, from my understanding, this will never work the way it was sold. Now, it may work to a degree for, for something, but it's never going to create grade A water. It's going to cost millions and millions and millions of dollars. We've already put millions into this. I don't think we need to do that again. And I don't think the citizens of this town want that to happen again. Now, I'm going to throw somebody under the bus and, and I'm going to let you know. She is a staff member and she is in this room. The way I count this, there's 82 seats out there right now. I don't think I can recall standing room only in this building. I can at the previous chambers where they were standing outside. We were protesting. People walking in and out to be able to speak. This is a good facility for what we are talking about. We have the security of the council and staff being able to come through the back door. Now, yeah, I'm looking at you, Kirsten. I'm throwing you under the bus. Here we go. Kirsten and I were talking prior to the meeting. Take that wall, put a window in it, take the door, reverse the door so that it opens in, put seating back there. Now, staff, when they come to these meetings, can sit over there. We usually have one, sometimes two, officers there. We usually have one, sometimes two officers that are here. Chief can sit over there in the corner. He can watch everything. It's perfect. Okay? You mentioned about, uh, uh, being able to see your, your, your things here. Okay, so we put in kind of a slanted wall right here, not full, but then you mount a big screen right there and it's, everyone out there can see it. Lower your podium, raise your microphone up a little bit. We take this table and we raise it up. We put in a ramp for ADA compliance. Bring it up two feet maybe. It's not much, but it looks like a lot. And we kind of round it, like Vice Mayor was saying, so that it's a little bit more inviting and we have actual conversations and we can see each other a whole lot better. This is and should be Cottonwood Council Chambers. Plain and simple. It's a lot bigger than where we were. It's suitable for what we're doing. And yes, there are other organizations that use this facility for that purpose. And I don't think we need to put in a whole lot of money. True, Councilman Dowell pointed out, six fifty's not gonna go very far. But it's, it's gonna go quite a ways for what we need here. If we've gotta go a mill, okay, well, we can always come back to chamber and we can talk about it. But the proposal of going somewhere else, it sticks in my craw. And I'll be honest with you. This is good enough. This is gonna last. People know where we're at. There's plenty of parking. We're already ADA compliant for, for entrance and egress. I, I just, I can't see us needing to go somewhere else. Spectrum was purchased, from my understanding, to kind of unite the city staff. It's big enough that you're gonna be able to grow, without a doubt. I don't think we need to put council chambers over there. I, we're good where we're at. I know that you guys are wanting direction. I'm giving you my personal opinion for direction. Let's stay right here. Let's make this just a little bit better, a little bit of tweaking, and I think we will be fine. Thank you.
Of course, I agree. And what Mario and our Vice Mayor pinpointed, we're putting what we need. And it's obvious. I mean, as far as ADA parking, if possible, we could even, we've got space over here if we needed to. That's an option. I don't know if it is an option, but if that's a problem. And, and some other places that I've seen for city council meetings, they have the podium over on, on the left. It's out of the way. Just, they're easy fixes and I think this is the best option, no question.
So I wanna kind of reiterate what Councilmember Marx said earlier is, could we have staff come back with options? You know, I, I like what Councilmember DeWilles said, you know, his option, I think is one option we could consider. Another option is the Spectrum building, you know, just lay out the various choices that we have and even thinking outside the box a little bit. Because if you recall, when we were thinking about, you know, a future building for staff, it was either here or the rough cut building. So we weren't even thinking about other available properties in the city and we should have. So let's, let's be open to other opportunities. So that's, that would be my request.
So I can jump in here, if you don't mind?
Sure, go ahead.
Just, I, I put the Spectrum floor plan up. I've got the first and the second floor plan. And part of the reason for the urgency in bringing this item also is staff's already working very diligently on a request for qualifications for design build for that building. To answer the mayor's first question, we don't know what space we'll need yet. That, that will come out of that process. If there's direction by council to consider a chambers in the building, these folks can speak to that. But I know that it will increase the cost of that design build contract just for the needs analysis and space needs component. Because they'll have to go, they'll have to spend the money to do that work, only to find out, yeah, it's not gonna work or it might. But, but we can have that conversation and these folks can jump in and, and answer. Cause they've, over the last few days, they've been all in, kinda trying to figure out what the options are for that.
Yes. So I can speak a little bit to, to the space needs, right? So we, we absolutely did a space needs analysis for the CMC building. And what we ended up doing is we talked to each and every department. We asked about kind of their current space needs right now, what they have, as well as, you know, what are your, what does your future look like? What does your department look like in ten to fifteen years as far as staffing? We looked at it from, you know, what employees are gonna be more in a collaborative type of environment? What employees needed offices? And we did come up with actually a space needs assessment. I will let you know, keep in mind, we were looking at it from a fifty thousand square foot facility, right? So we had a lot of open areas. We had a lot of, a lot more conference rooms. We had multipurpose rooms. We had chambers. We had, we had a lot of that in there. But just looking, I just wanna kinda give council a little bit of perspective. Looking at the space needs assessment, it looked like a total square footage. Again, that's what shared support and all the departments that are going over there. We were looking at roughly seventeen hundred square feet.
Seventeen hundred?
Seventeen hundred. Or, I'm sorry, seventeen thousand square feet. Yeah, we're gonna move into my house, right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Seventeen thousand. About seventeen thousand three hundred square foot. Now, again, those, I think staff needs to come back and we need to reevaluate this. This was done back in two thousand and three. I do know that there's, you know, could be changes. You know, we look at the existing floor plan. We can look at the existing, again, size of offices, things like that where we can kinda shrink that footprint down. There is departments that are on this list that we no longer have a department here. For, for instance, the legal department was on that list and included within that square footage. We no longer have a legal department, you know, we contract that out. John's here. So, you know, there's just some other discussions in regards to a space needs assessment. I will let you know that at the CMC, we were looking at close to a twenty-five hundred square foot council chambers. Pretty large council chambers. Again, something of that size, you know, we can, you know, probably shrink down. You know, to answer, I guess, some of the questions, I, I would agree with the comment in regards to not having the council chambers on the second floor. A lot of different potential issues that could come from that. I know Cody could speak a little bit more in detail about it if needed, but, you know, it could possibly require us to put in a second elevator. So that's an increased cost. We look at it from the actual design of that second floor and whether or not it was, it was designed for that amount of live load for like a public assembly. So if we did have ninety people up there. So we'd have to look at the structural integrity of that second floor and make sure that, you know, it met. We could always do things, structural support columns, you know, if council truly wanted it upstairs, we could look at that. You know, we look at the ingress, egress for a public assembly. Having the actual building, as far as an office building, as well as an assembly, is actually two different occupancies. So we have to look at that. So there's a lot of different code requirements when we kind of mix occupancies. There were some discussions about parking. Now, I can let Scott go more into detail, but I'll kinda take it over and I'll let him tell me that I'm wrong. Does that work? Okay. So when we look at public parking, I just wanted to kinda hit on that. Yes, we have ample parking here at the riverfront. To answer your question, Councilmember Walden, we did have a design as part of this facility here for parking underneath the solar array. That did include handicap parking right at the kinda bottom of that ramp. Now, if we don't have to build the entire parking lot, could we potentially build ADA parking stalls close to this facility? Yes. At the Spectrum facility, we have eighty-six existing stalls, four of which are ADA accessible. So it would meet code for the building, for the office building use that we are looking for. If we were to have council meetings there, we would actually have to ask for a variance from community development because currently the amount of space that we need for the actual offices, as well as a public assembly, like a council chambers, we're just, we don't have enough parking. Again, eighty-six stalls. I think if I sized the, the council chambers, and again, I just kinda threw a number out there and that was about ninety maximum. Cause what we do is we, we size the parking based off of the room's capacity at maximum. So I just did, I used, I used ninety. And again, we were like three stalls off of being within code compliance. Now, the nice thing with that is, you know, council chambers, kind of, you know, our meetings start, council meetings start at six o'clock. So we could ask for that variance where, you know, we'd be closed to the public for an hour. Council chambers would, would, you know, would kind of convene at six o'clock and we could ask for that variance. And it, and I believe it would allow us to utilize this facility if that was council's direction. So that kind of answered, hopefully answered some of your guys' questions in relationship to the parking. Again, you know, security has been brought up a lot. I think in, in both designs, we can accommodate any type of security concerns that the council has. You know, we could integrate, you know, a dais easily into this facility. You know, we could eliminate the windows. If the windows in the back here are, you know, we don't feel like we need windows to the back of the council, we could actually, you know, come in and put a wall in here with some, with some doors and leave some lighting and those sort of things. So I think you could increase security. Most council chambers have what we call hip walls. I don't know if you guys are familiar with a hip wall. And basically, it's a, it's just a kind of a pony wall that segregates kind of the council and staff from the public instead of using, you know, these kind of partition library dividers that we have here or line dividers. So there's, there's the other security measures that you could incorporate within any of the design, whether it be here and/or at the Spectrum facility. And trying to, I wrote down a bunch, so if you guys have other questions, as far as the podium placement and things with the podium, I think we do have to keep in mind that, you know, our podium does need to be ADA accessible. So, you know, obviously maybe upgrades to our existing podium, things that we could do at either facility. I think that was mentioned. The only thing that I had as far as a comment, and, and one thing I think council should be aware of is the possibility of kinda co-locating a facility. Keep in mind, we do have emergency meetings of, of sorts. And I know they don't happen all the time, but again, I think the scheduling conflict kinda came up and that could be an issue if we were kinda utilizing maybe a, a school board or another kind of a chambers or, you know, a shared chambers or something with a council. So that could be an issue and maybe something council should be aware of. Any other questions that maybe I didn't answer? I tried to hit them all. I tried to write them all down.
So you mentioned the space needs analysis?
Mm-hmm.
That was done in twenty-three?
Correct.
And it was, so basically the run-up was seventeen thousand square feet?
Correct.
Was that current needs or current plus projected?
That's current plus projected.
Okay.
And again, a lot of that square footage was, and I put in there too, the shared space, right? I know it sounds like a lot when we say twenty thousand square foot, but the size of the conference rooms that we had in a fifty thousand square foot facility were rather large. Now, again, I would recommend that staff take a, you know, another dive at this. And, you know, like I said, there's, there's conference rooms that are, that are large. I just left the square footage in there because it was just, I took our shared support and I brought it over. You know, I think there was two break rooms, you know, again, it was just for the sheer size of the building at fifty thousand square foot, you know, is that needed? There is a lot of areas in here that we were really trying to just utilize the space that we had at the other facility. So in my opinion, we could, we could absolutely take that seventeen thousand square foot down.
And I would, we currently don't have an EOC either. We don't have a, an emergency operating center. Right now, we use the front room with the PD and the fire, which is not an EOC. Just kind of a thrown together building. So that's something we need to consider. That space may need to come in here. Our dispatch does not have a secondary emergency dispatch space either. So when we consider all these other things that we are in need of in the city, to me, taking the space up there for these other, you know, the EOC or where they may be, we now have to get a different building. We have to add on. We have to move other things rather than stay where we are. So, I mean, I, and I guess that would be part of my ask is that when we look at this, is this a place for an EOC? Is this a place for an emergency dispatch? Like, I gotta put two councils in there so I can get through whatever it happens to be. All these other things, cause again, right now, we don't have an EOC. Right now, we're kind of just hanging out. So just some extra thoughts. And the EOC may be easily done with, you have a pie calendar or whatever happens to be on this side of the mountain. But I just wanna keep that open because, yeah, we may be able to squeeze ourselves in here, but once we squeeze ourselves in, our only alternative now is to get it in the building. So I just wanna keep that in there.
Absolutely agree. Plus, I think we also ought to consider having an in-house attorney space. Cause I think that's an obvious, it's a given.
And apart of that square footage, I left the entire legal department in there. Because again, it was, a lot of it was the unknown, so.
Yeah, and even if it wasn't-
That did account for that.
Even if it wasn't the attorney, we talked about the paralegal or whoever that was helping-
And it was all, so it was, it was when, I think when we did the space needs assessment, it was, Steve Horton actually was still here when we did that. And I believe it was two attorneys and a paralegal. That also included a, a private, kind of a smaller conference room for kind of conversations between, you know, one that an attorney would have with either staff or, or other legal councils. So that was incorporated within that. To answer your question, I hope I didn't misspeak, but if you remember Councilmember Dowell, when we were initially looking at the CMC facility, we did have invasions of doing an, an EOC there. And we were actually utilizing the multipurpose rooms for that. And that actually being ran off a backup generator, those sort of things. I don't know, and again, this is definitely something we could look at. What, and again, maybe in conversations with both chiefs of how much space would we require of that? Because we're not building anything in the Spectrum facility that would kind of accommodate a, a large space if needed for an EOC, if that makes any sense. Yeah, you, in my opinion, you probably need at least, minimally, at least half of the front room size of the PD and fire for an EOC. That would be probably acceptable. But, I mean, I hate to say it, but what do we always do with EOC? We always just throw it in the space to make it work because nobody wants to pay attention to it until the stuff hits the fan and then we're, it's not working for us. So. But I just wanna let you know that was not included in my-
Yeah.
-in my square footage, so.
Well, and just, just- So my brain's wrapped around it. First floor is twenty thousand, second floor is twenty thousand.
No.
No.
Ten thousand, ten thousand.
Ten, ten, ten thousand. Got it.
Okay.
Got it.
And would you have like just a swag on what, how big an EOC would be? What would be adequate?
You're probably talking about a seven hundred and fifty square feet, something like that. Just because you got so many, when you have the EOC, you got finance and fire and police and all that other kind of stuff in there. So it's not just, an EOC just isn't your fire and that. It's Public Works and everybody. So it's kind of that.
My experience has been that they generally double as training rooms. Cause you'll have the TVs and the computers and everything mounted on the wall. With regards to here, I, I don't know, again, the history of the flooding of the river, but I've been in an old EOC that was next to a river and we had a flood and we ended up having to meet in the library because we couldn't access any of the, any of the EOC because it had been part of the flood.
This is the hundred year flood zone right here, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think the plant's actually built to the five hundred year flood zone.
Oh, nice.
Am I correct, Tom?
That's correct. We actually elevated it to reach the five hundred.
Yeah, cause I know we talked about the parking lot being the hundred year flood, if I remember correctly. if I'm ever correct.
Mr. Widener, I think you're standing at your point of view for a presentation about this wastewater treatment plant that's coming up, but just, can you even conceive this being, being used for wastewater in the future?
There is a possibility. I've made a presentat, I'll be doing a presentation on the sixteenth, the council meeting on the sixteenth, on, on the history of this, where we, how we got to where we're at at this point in time, what's the future. The reason, we shut this plant down in twenty-twenty-two, and we didn't do a, an actual closure shutdown or a decommissioning shutdown, simply because of the cost involved in doing that. So, what we currently have is a temporary cessation of operation, and that can go on indefinitely, realistically. It's not something that you have to act on in any certain timeframe. Having said that, the only way that this plant would come back, because it would cost us minimum probably four to five million dollars just to get this back up, we would have to actually take everything out of the basins and install an, a, an NBR system in that, which is not cheap. In two thousand and twenty-two, when we looked at it, the cost was three million dollars. I can only assume by now it's probably doubled, just because of the way things have gone. So, I don't envision it happening. If it were to happen, the only reason it would be happening is if we had a, no other solution to mitigate an excess in pumping groundwater, we've got a cap in place. We currently have, potentially we have Pi Apache Nation settlements, which has a cap on how much groundwater we'll be able to pump. We have a conceptual agreement with Silver Project, which has a cap on how much groundwater we're going to be able to pump, and the adjudication ultimately will put a cap on us at some level as well. If we exceed those levels, we're going to have to mitigate it, and the, one of the options that you could use to mitigate would be this, but it would be the absolute last choice in the playbook, simply because of the fact of the cost it would, that would be required to bring this back up to a level that we could actually produce A-plus quality treated, reclaimed water. We would have to dump it into the ditch, which means we would then have to go and put up a monitoring system all along that ditch to make sure that we are not sending water back to the river that meets, you know, that doesn't meet the, the standards that are required. So, it's very, very, very unlikely that that will ever happen, but we don't want to go in at this point in time and say, ah, we're decommissioning, because that could cost us a million dollars right there, minimal, just to decommission this plant. So, I don't think that's in the cards. As far as security and additional measure you could take with regards to this building, you could easily put a, an automated gate back there that opens and closes based upon a code that you guys have, or a FOB or whatever, which you make it, you guys come in, it opens as you come in, it closes right behind you. And when you leave, you walk right up, it's an automatic, it opens and you drive away. So, which, that's one more security measure you could easily put in place here at, you know, minimal cost, relatively speaking.
So, I guess my very basic question is, regarding wastewater, can the city's current and future wastewater needs be met without this facility?
For a period of time, yes. Adding this plant won't really give us another option because of the, or won't give us really much additional treatment capacity, because we have no place to put the water that we treat. That's perhaps the biggest downplay of this plant itself. They built it without a disposal option in place to discharge the treated effluent once it was produced.
So, so, just hypothetical scenario, we, we just, we make the decision to discontinue the use of this facility for wastewater, we go, you know, we, we make this the council chambers and, and, you know, potentially other uses, and if, you know, then our future wastewater needs can, then, you know, we would expand our current facilities or build new facilities, and the cost difference wouldn't be significant. Does that, does that question make sense?
No. No. No, let me see if I can take a stab at what you're asking. We will have to expand Mingus eventually. We have gone through and done all the, the work required to determine exactly what we're projected effluent production will be, had built out. That will require us to get to about two-point-one million gallons per day of treatment capacity. Right now, we're at one-point-five, and we're currently treating about one million gallons per day on average. So, we've still got, you know, almost a half a million gallons per day of treatment capacity in that plant. With the work we're doing right now, although we're not going to save this, it will expand the treatment capacity by about an additional hundred thousand gallons per day, but it's not intended to be a permanent solution, because we need that swing basin to continue to do maintenance on the existing basins, but it does give us that option of using that for additional capacity if we had to. So, we will have to expand that plant. This plant here only has the treatment capacity of point-three million gallons per day, which is not going to take us to where we need to be. So, in answer to your question, we will have to expand the Mingus plant.
Okay.
And even with this plant, we'd still have to expand it.
Because, you know, my concern is, continue, you know, potentially, you know, throwing good money after bad, and it sounds, my takeaway from this, from your answer to my expertly asked question, is, you know, that the potential is there that would be simply, you know, that continuing to invest in this, this facility doesn't sound, you know, for wastewater treatment does not sound like a good investment.
This would only be a last resort.
Right.
After exhausting all of the options that are out there to us. I don't foresee this plant ever being put back online.
Okay. So, that certainly, you know, plays into my consideration about, you know, future, future council chambers. If we have this facility and can modify this facility, we own it, there may be potential to put in, you know, additional uses in it, then this seems to make sense to me.
Well, as I recall, there, there were uses for the water that would be produced by this treatment plant, one of which would be to, to take care of the parklands here. And I know that you have asserted that, well, it would produce so much water that the place would be flooded all the time, so it would produce too much water, but, and also, yes, some of it would have to be run off into the ditch, not into the river, but it could be infused into the ditch to some degree. I, I don't know how, how much I want to have the conversation about the functionality of the wastewater treatment plant, but I, I do recollect that that was part of the design element, was so that there would be water for the parks and the park area here. You know, if, if we're going to have soccer fields and other things that, that need and utilize water, that, this plant would be a source for that, and beyond that, it would be, I, I'm not sure what the terms were, if it was intended to be an infusion well that would hold, you know, a, a, a certain capacity of the water that the plant produced or not, but that was my understanding at the time that it was built.
That was one of the options. They identified three options for disposal here. One was irrigation of Riverfront Park, also the cemetery, and also some potential lands over in Dead Horse State Ranch Park. That was the irrigation component of disposal. They also proposed to direct discharge to the river, which the Department of Environmental Quality has said absolutely positively no way, and they were told that before they actually started down the path of getting this approved. They also made some serious flaws in their assumptions when it came to how much they could irrigate here at the park. They, at the time of the feasibility study, said that they were irrigating twenty-six-and-a-half acres of turf down here. There's never been more than eight acres of turf that's ever been irrigated here, and currently it's less, just slightly less than seven-and-a-half acres of turf. That accounts to between twenty-five and thirty acre-feet of water used annually, and this, this plant produces three-hundred-and-thirty acre-feet a year. So, roughly ten percent is, is all they could use for irrigation purposes at the park as it exists now, and if you even double, or triple that, you're still only in the ninety-eight feet per year, and you've still got an additional two-hundred-and-twenty feet, you've got to find a place to put it. That's a tremendous amount of water. So, irrigation was never going to get us there. They were proposing to do, see, there's two acres of turf at the cemetery, so they said, well, we'll put a pipeline over there. Well, that was a half-million-dollar proposal for that. They said, oh, well, we'll do forty-three acres over in Dead Horse State Ranch Park. Well, there's not forty-three acres of turf over there that could be irrigated, and even if you were to do that, it would cost you almost three million dollars to get the water over there. It just didn't make any sense, and they didn't take that into consideration when they designed this plant. So, ultimately, at the end of the day, you had a solution for discharging to the river, which was not going to be accepted by the Department of Environmental Quality. You only had seven-and-a-half acres of irrigated turf currently, and at most, you could expand it to maybe twenty at the most, if you did everything down here in turf. Well, that's only going to get you to sixty acre-feet, sixty-five acre-feet a year, which is only, you know, twenty percent, thirty percent of what, you know, the production is down here, so. We, and then, of course, then the third option was send it back to Mingus, whatever's left. Well, that's what we did for five years trying to get this plant to operate, and it just didn't pan out. Just didn't make any sense to keep spending money on this plant year over year when we couldn't do any except partially treat it and send it up to Mingus for, to get re-treated again and disposed up there.
Before I move on, I, I do want, another one of my recollections is, Director Hausman, as we walked through the Spectrum building, you, you stated at the time, and I realize this was, you know, not based on any great plan in mind, but you were saying that everyone who would need city offices in, in that building could be on the first floor, that every, the first floor would be sufficient for locating all of the different departments and offices that were needed by the city at the time. Is that correct?
So, I think we had put a proposal together, and when I was speaking with Tom, the majority of staff could go on that first floor, and then we did have offices that were already on the second floor too. So, it was a combination of the majority of the offices could be utilized in its current configuration. It's not ideal configuration, but could very well be utilized, but I knew we were also relocating our IT department and such over to this facility, which then required some of those office, maybe some of the administration offices as well as our IT department upstairs in the existing offices that you can kind of see to the left there. Kind of the upper left, where the, we have those existing offices in that second space, correct?
And I'm, I'm assuming too that it's, one way or another, you know, another point that, that I want to bring up is that in our strategic plan, we are anticipating, although this is not anything written in stone either, we are anticipating that there will be more workers working from home in the future, so that was another point that has been made about, you know, the, the space that we need for, for city offices. I'm, I'm not sure that, you know, everybody's just going to be able to, to do utilities and all, and, and everything else from home. I'm, I'm sure that's not the case, but, but I also want to understand, are we, are we thinking in terms of reaching a kind of equilibrium with the number of offices that we're going to need for the city now and over the next twenty years, or are we going to continue to? Because, yes, over, over time, we have added more, we've, we've eliminated some but added more offices. Are we going to continue to do that? What, what do we anticipate? Is, is the point being made in our strategic plan one that makes sense and is viable and that we should consider as we're looking at how we build out this space? Because the Spectrum building's not ready to just move into today, we're not doing that. The upstairs, no matter what we decide to use it for or don't use it for, there's a lot of renovation that's going to have to come. There are, you know, surgical suites upstairs that we're going to have to, to, to remove and repurpose the, the space itself, and it, that's, that's going to be an expensive proposition. So, and it's not one that we can simply ignore or put off to the future. If we're going to move into the building, we need to commit to this and be ready to commit the funds to, to this, this obviously needed renovation.
I think we already committed the funds, didn't we, Kostin? Didn't we put like seven million or something?
We have budgeted funds.
Yeah.
But we have not committed funds.
We budgeted, though.
To cover.
Okay.
We did not budget probably enough to do the full renovation in
Right.
... current fiscal year. I anticipated that we would need some to get started, and then do a reimbursement through bonding and bond for what was needed to cover the cost.
Mari, can I go back to something you said, I think you last said, and, because I'm not clear on it, you were saying something along the lines of, if council chambers were to be considered for citing in the Spectrum building, that that would incur additional design costs?
Well, yes, I mean, you, when you look at it, there, there, each element that we want to put in the building has to be considered by the design firm, and so if, if they're also considering, I, I think from the majority of folks here, majority of council and, and staff uniformly believes that really the only option for a council chambers is on the first floor. And so, when you look at the first floor, oh, go backwards, you look at the first floor and all of the offices that would serve staff well for minimal, with minimal renovations, to move the majority of them up to the second floor to put a chambers on the first floor, then you have all of that open space that now has to be turned into office space, and so that would increase the construction costs, but simply looking at it would include, increase the probable cost of any proposals that we receive for the design-build process.
And I think you're also saying that the longer it takes for council to make a decision about citing, the more it will gate the ability of you to proceed with the Spectrum planning process.
Yes. And, and we, we had committed to council, and David and I had talked about this, you know, when we get this RFQ completed, we'll come to council for all of the elements that are going to be in there. That'll be kind of another opportunity for council to determine, you know, what, what we believe should be in there from a design-build concept, and council will have the opportunity to say, yeah, that sounds good, or did you consider this, or we'd like to see this, that sort of thing. But I, I mean, it's been good conversation, but I, I think that you folks are starting to see kind of the, the different perspectives, and, and we have things that we want to do. Clearly, some of the things that we could do in the interim to make this more usable, not saying we need to go permanently here, but, but there are things that, that we could do. We could move some of the seating around, if we have too much seating. The podium, which I've seen in numerous council chambers, could be moved off to the side so it's not blocking the view of the public. There, there are a lot of things that we could do now for minimal cost, and we should undertake those, and we will look at those moving forward, which, again, doesn't get us to where we need into permanent chambers, but at least I've heard that tonight from this council, and we could take a look at that stuff.
So, just to add a little perspective, just something that David had indicated earlier.
Earlier, okay. So, I had a chance to do a little bit of research. No, we wouldn't need to add an additional elevator. The building is, so I talked with the fire marshal, and yes, the building does have a fire suppression system, which would alleviate the need for, so when you have a large building, you, once you, especially once you throw in assembly, you do have to adjust for the egress, and then you do have to have the egress for ADA compliance. Luckily, there is the allowance being that the Luckily, there is the allowance, being that the building is fully suppressed, to have a area for assisted rescue. And luckily, this place does have significant egress out of the second floor. So that is something that, just to give you guys a little more information, because when we had spoke, it was kind of on a whim that it was just like, hey, what would happen? Well, I didn't know that the building didn't have, that had sprinklers or not. I found that the generator does not work, or at least is what I was told. Generally, when you're utilizing the elevator as an egress path, then it needs to have backup generator. Now, being that the fire sprinklers, well, that eliminates that, and then you have all of the staircases which connect as an area for assisted rescue. So I just figured I would mention that, but as David did mention, there is the additional floor loading. I've tried to, we don't have the historical documents from when this building was built. I've searched everywhere, we don't have it. But, you know, that is kind of typical with, generally, we're only required to keep plans for 180 days after the project's completion. So, yeah, my predecessors didn't hold on to it. Would have been nice, but they didn't. I reached out to the architectural firm that designed it originally, and I'm waiting for a call back. Generally, those architectural firms keep that information in their files. So once we do have that, then I can analyze whether this floor loading would be adequate. Regardless of whether the floor loading is adequate or not, I think that we still do need to have a structural evaluation on that second floor because there is some signs of structural failure that, it might not be a big deal to me, but there is a step in the concrete through the middle that is, I mean, you drop a golf ball, it'll roll down the hill. It's, there's a step in it. So I think that that would be pertinent in our planning process. We would need to get an architect. That is something that unfortunately, just state law would just say, we have to, we can't, we can't design that. And as Mario was saying, that, you know, ideally, having it on the first floor, yeah, it would be more ideal having it on the first floor, but that would require relocating office space that is already built out. And so that's just my opinion on it. I think that the lower level has the majority of the needs that we do need at this point with minor modifications, and we can make it work. And then upstairs for that overflow, we have plenty of overflow. Again, that was just my input that I figured that might be beneficial.
So I understand. You said one elevator is?
One elevator would be adequate.
Even if we have a council chambers that, with a capacity of like 100 people, maximum occupancy?
Yes.
With an average age in this city of 58 years old, with a lot of people, you know, who are going to be taking elevators, and if there's some emergency, what's the capacity of that elevator?
Exactly. And so that's like what I mentioned as far as adequacy, yeah, it would be more adequate for it to be on the first floor. Code compliance and ADA compliance, it would be compliant.
Do we know what the capacity of that elevator is?
Well, the capacity of the elevator, I mean, the problem is that the elevator isn't a necessity, isn't identified as far as an egress path, because egress path is for emergency, and an elevator is out of commission during an emergency unless it has then by general...
People are ready for the stairwell.
Yes.
When you talk about assisted rescue, you know, how many people do we have available to assist in rescues? I'm just...
Yeah, and I understand that. I mean, personally, I mean, I've been to several council meetings, I've probably only seen two people in a wheelchair in the entire time. That's not to say that there would never end up being that, but generally, you would have a small portion of people that would be in need of actual ambulatory rescue. And there is plenty of egress paths and places to be, have assisted rescue. And so that may settle, but like I said, is that I do agree. I think that adequately, yes, the bottom floor would be much more ideal, but as far as a code perspective, it would still work on the second floor.
Yeah. So, you know, the picture that's kind of the puzzle that's getting put together in my mind continues to be, you know, we should not have it on the second floor. Putting it on the first floor will induce costs, you know, additional costs, because, you know, the first floor is more move-in ready, less renovation needed. Like I said before, we should really be taking a look at, you know, every dollar we should be spending on a council chambers needs to be a dollar well spent, because that dollar is not, you know, for me, the best dollar we can spend is a dollar that creates $2 in revenue. And this is not doing any of that. And so that's, you know, we've got to take that into consideration, I believe.
Well, you know, and there are other things that we can take into consideration, too. It really does have to do, for me, a lot, having a vision for the future of the city. Where do we want to be? And where do we want to be 20 years from now? And what will, what will the city and council members in the future feel about being here as opposed to being where the city offices are? There's a real convenience to being able to hold council meetings where city offices are. It really is, it really is kind of nice that everything can be going on in one place. And there are possibilities for that. No, if, I would not want to clear out the offices, the spaces on the first floor in order to accommodate a council chamber. And if it can be shown to me that it's absolutely impossible to have a viable council chamber on the second floor of the Spectrum Building, I will understand that. I am actually open to these possibilities, but my preference remains that we put a council chamber with other city offices and city staff. They're generally not overlapping. Our meetings, our council meetings and other commission meetings are not happening at the same time that everyone is at work. Most of the time, people are going home, and then meetings are being held. And we do have a nearby overflow opportunity by using the recreation center, if that's what we need to do. And that would, in my estimation, probably be a rare occasion. So I just want to hold open the possibility, and if my input means anything, I'm just interested in understanding about the possibility. Can this be done? And if it can't, just tell me, you know, I'll get it, I'll understand. But I don't want to be told, I don't want to be argued out of the possibility before it's been made clear that it just can't happen. And that, you know, there are so many reasons against it that it can't possibly be a good idea, because in spite of arguments to the contrary, I continue to believe that it's a good idea.
So I think I'm hearing three, maybe four options, right? So there's continuing this facility and make changes. There's the Spectrum Building, the first floor, and then the third option is the second floor of the Spectrum Building. The only fourth option I heard was use, you know, another area facility to be identified. Councilmember Marx mentioned some options. Could staff, you know, critically evaluate those against, you know, some of the things that we've identified as being important and address, you know, some of the concerns? And then come back to us with a critical analysis of those options?
Yeah, I've taken notes. I know the team's taken notes. We can do that. We can put stuff together and kind of drill down a little bit more on each one.
I mean, would that be helpful to council? Would you see that as a helpful next step?
Absolutely. Oh, sorry. Go ahead. That's all I...
Let me just cut to the chase, which I'm known to do. There's way too many obstacles for anything other than this building. It's just so obvious to me. And there's too many what-ifs, what-est potential, and we need to do something without taking too much staff time and cost. And I think this is the best option, given what we know so far. And that's my opinion, and I think that's pretty blatantly obvious.
That would be my opinion, too, Councilmember Wildin. At the same time, I think we owe it to ourselves to go through the due diligence and just to really critically evaluate our options before making a decision.
Yeah, without having, like, them to do a complete...
I don't want to ad nauseam, like, you know, yeah, throw, you know, 150-page report or anything like that.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
I just want to, I think there's some things that we wouldn't know without an architect, right? You know, I think, you know, the possibility of building it, you know, on the, I think anything's doable with money, right? Is the existing second floor capable? We won't know, right? But could you make it capable? Yes, right? It's just going to cost you more money. So I guess if you're asking staff to kind of prepare, to what level are you looking at? Because, you know, some of those items could require us to hire an architect to look at.
If I could address that, here's what I want. I just want to know what the space needs are in general. I mean, and you don't have to assign everybody to an office for me, but I want to understand what the space needs are currently for staff. And then, you know, I want to understand the possibilities, because I already know, and we all should be aware, that no matter what happens on the second floor of the Spectrum Building, it will be absolutely unacceptable to simply leave the little surgical areas without renovating them, and that's going to cost money. It's going to be very costly to do that. The equipment in a surgical room is pretty expensive, and having to pull out and modify and change things around has the potential to be expensive. So we're going to be looking at expense. The thing about creating a council chamber is it really doesn't involve that much expense. It's not, it's going to involve limited expense in looking at the planning itself, but it's not going to, it's not going to change the fact that space is space, and either there is space, we will have enough space for staff and a council chamber, or we won't. But I want to know that, and I want to, I want to leave the possibility open. And I don't want to cut to the chase. I want more definite information about the possibility, rather than just eliminating it out of hand as though we just, this is it, this is all we can possibly do, because it isn't.
Yeah, and if that's what you're looking for, that's definitely something that staff can prepare and address council at a future meeting.
My concern with wherever we put it in the Spectrum Building will be, it'll have to be segregated from the rest of it. You're going to have to segregate something, because you can't obviously just have a walkway where people walk through offices and that. So I think that that expense in itself would be enough for me to...
Well, ultimately, one of the solutions is going to be more expensive than the other. They're not all going to cost the same.
Right.
And that's, that'll be a consideration. I don't think we need specific estimates. I think, you know, if it's possible, do educated guesses based on experience. You know, we, for me, that works.
Well, my direction would be that we don't get too deep in the woods or in the weeds with it. Give me enough that we can make a logical decision on this. But I think you guys know where my direction would be. But, I mean, if something just comes up and they say, yeah, it works, then let's talk about it. But I don't want, I don't want this can to get kicked down the road either. There's a lot of staff time and a lot of stuff that...
Nobody does.
I'm just saying, okay, we've seen this here. We watched that building, it got kicked down the road for 10 years.
Right. And anyway, does anybody on staff know how to sew? Because maybe that surgery center, you know, we can do a little revenue gener, no?
So, woman numeral, woman numeral number three. Items for discussion, consideration, and possible direction to staff. I think we've kicked the can around the room to the point where the can is now flat. We've given you guys direction. Give us, give us some plans and some options on this building and the cost of what it would be to do what we have discussed this evening. And for the Spectrum Building as well. And I think that's all we need to say, my personal opinion. We're here, we're home. This is it. But that's my personal opinion.
Well, it's not just a dollars-to-dollars thing, and that's what I was trying to say when I was talking about the renovation of the second floor of the Spectrum Building. It's not, it's going to cost a lot of money to do that in the first place. It isn't necessarily going to hinge on whether there's a council chamber there or not. It's just going to be expensive. And it'll be less expensive, yes. You're right. I believe you're correct, that it will be less expensive to, you know, patch some things here, do, you know, move some things around, make some of this more permanent. But at the same time, is it the best possible solution to the need for a city council chamber? And that remains for me an open question.
So, Madam Mayor, you yourself brought up a security question.
Yes.
Okay. Take a look at that building. Take a look at that parking lot. Now, count the individuals that are in this room right now. How many individuals in here parked back here where it's safe? How many individuals are out there in the parking lot where there's a lot of parking? It would be so beneficial from your standpoint of security to be in this facility than it would be in the Spectrum Building. There's no privileged parking, there's no privileged entrance, there's none of that. Now we have to buy more land to be able to park around the backside so that council would feel more safe. There's 16 people, by my count, in this building right now, okay? You said 87 parking spots?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six parking spots. We just took 16 of them. Now we're down to 70. The seating out there, by the way it is right now, is 82. You see what I'm getting at?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I agree.
It's a space availability thing, and everything has to be looked at.
That's why we're here.
That's why I'm saying this is, that's why I'm saying this is a good facility for council chambers for the next, I believe it was brought up, 10 years. This is, this is good. Everyone knows we're here. Planning and zoning comes here, you know, this facility gets used. But I just, I don't see a need for us to be having to move, but I am willing to look at options.
Yeah, me, too.
Mr. Ellison, any comments? You can quiet.
Do you, do you guys have the direction that you were hoping to get this evening? I got one head shake. One, two?
I think so.
Head nod, head nod, sorry.
I think we do, to recap...
There you go, we got a wave.
To recap kind of what we've gathered here, don't necessarily expend money, but utilize the depth of experience that we have on our team and come up with an educated guess for both here and the Spectrum Building, upstairs and downstairs for the chambers there, and come back to council with what we believe is the feasibility of each and what...
You said that very eloquently and right on point.
Yes.
Okay.
Let's do that.
Yeah, please. That is what I want, yes.
Okay. We will do that.
Thank you. And we don't have to brag about the fact I can see how this is going to go right now, so. No problem.
Shall I move to a John? Are we done?
Are we done?
We have the direction we need. Thank you.
I move to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.